Our broadcast and I'll look for any if there's anybody in the audience that needs to be migrated. So we are live.
So this is the planning board meeting of the third of September, 2025. Uh, we'll start with roll call. Brian Belkum. Not here. Jen Bluestein. Not here, Alden Clark. Here Charlie Palmasano.
Yeah.
It's here. Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tater.
Here.
Jack LeCaire.
Jack is here.
Matt Heffron.
Here.
And I am here.
Pleasure.
Okay, um, we just have general business on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first item listed is approval of minutes, but uh, for, for the 20th of August, but those have not been distributed yet, so we're going to hold on that and hopefully get to that at our next meeting. Second item on the agenda, which um, I think we will spend the rest of our time on tonight is uh, the, the, our comments and, and you know, folded into a letter that we will forward to the, the zoning board of appeals related to the Plaza Landings project. Uh, so what, what I have done is, is try to put a rough outline together of, of comments that, that we have heard in, in prior meetings. Um, and, and Andy and I have put together a draft based upon that, uh, that, that we can review and hopefully sign off on tonight so that we can get that letter to the zoning board of appeals prior to their next meetings, which uh, Andy, I think the next meeting has to do with traffic.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I agree.
It's important that we get our comments to them uh, as, as soon as we can.
Yeah, thank you. Do you mind if I just add a comment or two?
Yeah, but go ahead.
Yeah, uh, just like Bob said, um, you know, he had tried to synthesize the, uh, we had obviously discussed a little bit of this at the last meeting and um, you know, he, he had attempted to sort of uh, synthesize that. Uh, we sort of merged that together into sort of a letter uh, with some narrative, just to kind of flush it out. Um, and um, it's good timing in fact, because the, because this one appeals uh, hearing, although it's being continued for a number of months, um, because it's a long permit timeframe, um, the uh, board decided to hold off on some of the discussions related to traffic and as well as pedestrian bicycle circulation type stuff. Um, that is related to the intersection at Low Street, the driveway and sort of wrapping around the building. So um, I, I mentioned that because some of the comments that you have uh, seem to overlap with comments that have already been made in the record um, by the peer review consultant or others, um, essentially suggesting some, um, you know, in addition to perhaps anything else here or otherwise, some slight level improvements that could benefit, you know, the uh, the environments where, where the building sort of intersects uh, what is presently a lot of parking uh, and asphalt. So um, at any rate, uh, this uh, I'd be happy to divert to Bob and the board, how you want to run through this. Um, in order to kind of avoid the problems associated with deliberations between meetings and having back and forth that way, we consolidated as best we could. Um, that, and we're happy to go kind of, you know, section by section, page by page, wherever. Um, and either read that uh, in the record if you want, or just kind of re-review the narrative yourself and um, see if, if we have covered everything, if there's something missing or something you'd like modified. So that as Bob said, we could get that back to the ZBA. Uh, and they'll have time to digest those comments and take them into account, you know, in parallel with other things uh, that might be overlapping with that traffic discussion on the 23rd and then beyond that. Um, and uh, and also the applicant will be able to see those comments as well. Um, again, part of that record and will be able to perhaps uh, respond to those concerns as well, which again, like I said, overlap with other comments. So sorry to go so long-winded, but I thought that was helpful context.
So I, I think um, just, just to sort of walk through this for a second, the, you know, the, the beginning of the letter is, is kind of creating some context for, for this project uh, relative to the overall uh, Story Avenue development uh, and the, and the overlay zoning that we will be looking at. Um, as, as we begin to discuss that over the next year or so. So this, this is just, and Andy, you can kind of go into this in a little bit more detail, but it basically puts the Plaza Landings project uh, in the context of future discussions about the Story Avenue District. And, and you know, I think we all want to talk about, you know, how this project relates to that future development, how it can uh, at least address conditions at the perimeter of the current Plaza Landing site uh, that can then lead us to, you know, logical expansion of all of this development as we go forward. So um, this first paragraph, actually second paragraph with the heading Plaza Landings Kmart Development and Long Term Vision for the surrounding area, that, that's intended to, to create that context for the overall project. So does anyone have any questions or want to have any further discussion about that? If, if not, we can kind of move on to the, the bullet points and begin talking about our specific comments related to Plaza Landings.
I guess my only question would be, I know we talked a lot about in the past when uh, Rick and Alden kind of went back and forth about reading some of these things into the record. But given how long this document is, can we just simply reference the letter or do we, is it prudent to read it in?
Oh no, that's fine. I, it's not, uh, you know, that, this is fine here. We can skim through the document and comment on the things that are relevant to your, where you'd like tweaks and whatnot. We don't need to read the whole text, so to speak. I was just offering that if it's helpful for anybody for any reason. Um, just in terms of sharing this, you know, normally we have documents we're seeing before a meeting, but um, because we can't have deliberation amongst the board about something like this. Um, it's uh, we're just trying to review the text and the narrative together here. And as Bob said, um, it's organized in bullets below uh, so that the, each concept or issue that it seems like the planning board members wanted to identify and flag for the ZBA's consideration um, are covered by a bullet. So you can read each one at a time and you know, determine if it covers what we, you know, we think we wanted to cover.
So I guess what, what, what I'd like to accomplish tonight is, you know, are we as a board comfortable with, with the bullets listed? Uh, are there any additional comments that we should include in this? Uh, and, and I'd like to get to the point where, where we have the, the, the chassis of a letter that, that, you know, Andy and I can finalize over the next day or so and, and get this on to the ZBA. So I think, I think the best way to do this is, Andy, I think just, let's just go through it um, item by item.
Before, before we do that, um, so I, I wasn't clear, have we seen this before? Should I have seen this before or are we just seeing it now?
No, that was my point is um, just because of the timing and putting this together and the nature of, of board members not having a lot of back and forth over uh, a substantive nature, you know, something that should be discussed in a, a public forum. Um, as a body, we put together this narrative and thought it would make sense because, you know, to give you time uh, to review this text together as a group, we're hopeful that, you know, the group uh, can do that here during the meeting together and determine if it captures the, the general sense of uh, issues you wanted to cover, uh, areas you wanted to have flagged for the ZBA's consideration. Um, that was the goal here. Understood that normally we, we might try to uh, distribute something like applicant materials or peer review comments and things like that in advance of a meeting, so.
I guess just following up on that, um, I don't want to prejudge what we're going to talk about tonight, but um, it's, we do have another meeting, we could do it. We could discuss, if there's a lot of stuff that came up tonight, we could hold it up till our next meeting and we still have plenty of time before the zoning board meeting, correct?
Agreed, concur 100%. Um, I, I again, like Bob said, there's benefit, uh, you know, as he mentioned, I would say just as planning director, it's beneficial to the other board and to the applicant and the process there that they have, because it's a statutory timeframe. There's timeframe it takes for consultants to do modifications on plans, for instance, um, to consider, you know, changes. Uh, there is still benefit if the letter comes sooner, but you're correct, you could continue that discussion as we will later meeting and just introduce that letter. We just obviously want to get that to them so that they have the full benefit of planning board comments as, as soon as you're able.
And I guess another, another option would be if we didn't want to wait, if there was, if there's something comes up tonight that there is some discussion about. You and Andy and Bob could um, could draft a revised letter and send it to the board and the board could say yes, or we need more discussion, right? We don't, that wouldn't be a, a board deliberation if, if you just sent it out and said, if anybody wants to have further discussion, we will, we will discuss it our next meeting, otherwise we'll move forward with this, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it would be helpful if we just structured it so that if anybody has any particular concerns, we just go with that, that it's back on the agenda. Um, you know, rather than that sort of, you know, me tallying it to a quorum via email, right? So at the end of the day, yeah, if, if we can just, I, you know, flag if someone has a particular concern, maybe it goes back to the agenda if you all agree. Again, I don't have any particular preference myself, I defer to, to you uh, as a board, how you want to handle this, you know, from here forward. Um, but um, just trying, you know, find a way to make it work mechanically without any issues, so that's all.
One question, what's the approximate timeline of the, for the developer? What are they thinking?
Uh, I think, believe it's December 21st would be the date that the zoning board of appeals has to make a decision by, uh, issue a decision by. Um, but there's several different lines of peer review and uh, analysis, you know, of the project that's being done. There's been requests for review by different departments of the city, uh, some peer view consultants, uh, and so those things are working their way into the cycle as well as additional public comment. Um, and so I think traffic and, and uh, that aspect of the project will be the most um, likely focus for folks. Um, given what we know, uh, and that is on the agenda for the 23rd of September. They have already preemptively scheduled a meeting for the following Tuesday, the 30th, uh, recognizing that they'll probably want to continue that discussion another night, um, you know, give it additional focus perhaps. So they've already assumed that there's two meetings that, at the end of that month of September uh, to do this. But again, it's beneficial if you're able to um, come to co- com- com- confidence uh, with the comfortable, with the comments that you have. The sooner they have that uh, the better it is for them as a board, because they can digest those things. Again, you have to decide, you know, when that is, if it has everything in here and how you want to handle that, happy to defer to whatever that process is. Um, no, you know, defer to you. Um, I just note that um, you know, that, that process will end ultimately speaking December 21st, unless there's a, an extension uh, and exchange, you know, dis-exchange uh, with the applicant based on back and forth over a few things where folks feel like there's, they need to have more time.
Andy, do we know when the, the architectural review will happen?
Uh, that is expected to happen essentially in October. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll be able to share the comments that we get and um, sort of merge that discussion together. If you want to attend the, you know, ZBA meetings, when that is, is being discussed with the consultants. In essence, that would follow the uh, traffic, stormwater, civil review, which is uh, will be sort of the September month uh, for this project.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry, did I miss anything?
No, don't think so.
Okay.
So that was, I mean, there's, in, in this letter, I, I don't think there's anything in here that we haven't already discussed in our previous meetings. These are all comments that, that all of you have made uh, that, that I have tried to put together in a coherent form uh, so that we could talk about whether this is, this is the, the, the collection of comments or, or whether there's additional comments or whether we want to edit what, what is in here right now. So all of this should, should look relatively familiar based upon our previous discussions.
Agreed completely. And that's why, you know, we can essentially just go bullet by bullet if folks want, you know, uh, defer to you all.
Yeah.
Let's, let's just dig into it, Andy.
Perfect. So anybody have any concerns about number one? As written. Basically, uh, you know, considering normal uh, review of typical items in relation to a development project, um, you know, yes, it's a 40B project, but that doesn't necessarily mean there are the normal considerations and best practices. So this is just making that clear as a starting point. Uh, number two, um, this is.
I have a question. Is this, is this letter being posted on the, on the Zoom? Cause I don't see it on my view here.
Uh, you should see a visual display of the letter, do you not?
I don't.
It might be your view setting in Zoom, you can um, I, I don't know how you're set up on your computer there, but the, there's usually a right-click buttons or uh, settings, uh, you know, that you can navigate to that will allow you to see the uh, display of whoever's presenting. So you should see a Word document right now.
I'm not, I'm just seeing uh, just seeing you people, that's all.
Uh, you'll, yeah, you'll have to toggle your um, Zoom settings, because it's, it's each person on their individual computer controls that in Zoom.
Yeah, I was trying to do that, but I'm not.
It sounds like you've got it set only to show uh, the people and not the presenter's materials.
Hmm.
Wish I could help you, Jack. That's not my forte.
Jack, there's a, on my computer, there is a, in the upper right-hand corner of the screen is the word view.
View, yeah.
If you click on that.
Gallery up here and.
Don't do gallery, do standard.
Do standard.
Standard.
Do you see a standard option?
Nope.
Click on view, you don't get a pull-down menu?
Yeah, I see it, but I'm not seeing any choices that refer, just sees speaker gallery, sort, gallery. No, there's no side-by-side? No, not seeing it. Huh. But go ahead, go ahead.
Your screen may be bigger, bigger than.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that too.
Maybe try the speaker, the one that says speaker, I don't know how it's worded in there, but I just.
Side-by-side speaker.
So on my device, I have button, I have two little buttons at the bottom. And I can toggle between the two, but it's an Apple iPad. I don't know if that helps. I can change the view by those two buttons right below the pictures.
No, not seeing it, but go ahead, I'll listen up.
Okay, uh, the second bullet is basically just noting that um, although the, the applicant may call out and say that certain things aren't relevant for review in a given project, in this case, either in the context of a 40B or because of the, the nature of the plans, they may not think it's relevant and just, you know, again, noting that the board should make its own determination on that, uh, as well as its consultants and engineers who might be doing a peer review uh, to make that determination for itself. I think that, that also goes to the waiver list, I guess. Um, you know, when the ZBA looks and determines whether or not to grant waivers for the project. Um, they should make its own determination of that, you know, recognizing the applicants, um, you know, going to put forward, you know, uh, there are sensible arguments for it, but the board should make its own conclusions one way or the other, so. Um, and they'd also notes in here that stormwater management and off-site pedestrian and traffic mitigation are, are sort of those typical um, review considerations that uh, one might expect.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And just pause me here as I'm going. Since uh, AEOHLC, which is the Executive Office of How Is It Be in Liveable Communities, long acronym, um, received the applicant's pro forma, and so their sort of financial plan uh, essentially for this project. Um, it's, it was noted that because the applicant here has said it's not required for the ZBA's permit process and for a comprehensive permit, um, it was suggested here in this bullet or at the last meeting that um, that that also being included in the public record for folks to have, you know, transparency on that front. Um, the um, the comprehensive permit regulations at the state level and the way that those are interpreted and applied and the way that case law applies to that is in essence that the uh, the board can't require the pro forma as a submission requirement upfront per se, but they can, uh, it can be sort of uh, driven in later discussions with the developer uh, or applicant as to whether or not they can uh, be expected to do certain mitigation or improvements, meaning you know, there's certain costs that are estimated to go with, you know, traffic improvements or something. And uh, the developer comes back and says, it doesn't work for my pro forma, I can't do those improvements and make this how, the affordable housing aspect of this project work. Um, so that's the point at which the pro formas are something that has to be submitted for the record and the, the permit process. That's, I'm just breaking down for you briefly, um, some of the minutia of how the regulations work. Um, but i- in effect, this, the board was just suggesting here, I think, that um, it'd be beneficial to transparency to, for that information to also be provided. And uh, since it was essentially already given to the state anyway. Prior to granting a comprehensive permit, uh, this, this number four, just talked about uh, two documents in particular about the regulatory agreement and the affirmative marketing plan, uh, the affordable housing affirmative marketing plan. Um, that is just essentially calling out the sort of standard form documents that are associated with the affordable housing units. And so uh, the suggestion here was that those documents be made available during the permitting process and referred to um, with enough clarity so that there is an ambiguity or debate later on, um, particularly the board had noted uh, in terms of local preference. So that those things aren't missed in those agreements and, you know, later on, that they're sort of memorialized and agreed to now, given that they're sort of typically expected for a project like this, they shouldn't be hard to create, so. Then we go into, you know, site, two, two sections, one related to site design and the other one's related to uh, architectural design. Um, so site design number five talks about um, uh, makes reference to the civil and stormwater review by Phil Christensen, who is the planning board's peer review consultant and here was used by the ZBA as well. Um, planning, planning board more often has site plans and so uh, we have to see Phil more often. Um, but at any rate, the comments that were given by Phil Christensen and also the city engineers suggested there was additional work that needed to be done. Uh, in essence was that there was not, um, there was a whole bunch of analysis that needed to be done um, uh, more adequately than it was the initial submission was. So they were sent back to do that. They are expected, I think, by September 12th to return that information, so our consultants can look at it. That will give the um, the consultant, our consultant um, a week to review and give its comments back to the planning board. So they'll have the benefit of the applicant's uh, responses and then the peer review comments uh, to see how far they've come to address those concerns, if everything or not. Um, but um, here this bullet basically just notes that there were some significant concerns noted in that stormwater analysis and that the applicant had some work to do. Um, and that uh, it's not 100% clear what the impacts might be to the wetlands across the street, uh, given the drainage connection under the road. And so uh, in this bullet, it just, it also notes that the conservation commission, uh, it's acknowledged that the conservation commission is presently reviewing the project. Uh, because of its, it's actually located in the uh, buffer zone to the resource area, it's across the street. Um, but it's because it's in that 100-foot buffer zone there. Um, so that's what that bullet is speaking to, essentially just saying that stormwater needs to be looked at.
Andy, um, may I ask, with a friendly 40B or a 40B, I should say, um, how much um, control does like conservation have over a project like this? Out of curiosity.
Um, so the, the simple distinction is that the local ordinance, so there, there's a Wetlands Protection Act, that's the statewide one that applies everywhere essentially. Um, they still have that state, that review under the state statute, uh, so where there, it, there might be 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands. Uh, but there isn't a uh, required mandatory no disturb zone in the state uh, Wetlands Protection Act that is often adopted locally. So in this case, the mandatory 25-foot no disturb zone, although that's not an issue with this project, um, they're not getting close enough to do that. Um, but in, in, in this case here, the local ordinance that was adopted, that is part of the consolidated ZBA review. So in essence, the ZBA is making the determination in lieu of the conservation commission, whether or not uh, that uh, additional requirement, let's say in this case, a 25-foot no disturb zone should or should not be waived, the way the commission, conservation commission would consider whether or not to do that. Um, here it's just because the local, anything local, any local permits are consolidated through um, through the, the zoning board of appeals. And because that's a local ordinance as opposed to the state statute that the commission is looking at. They, the commission still reviews it and they are looking at it, but it's only under the WPA, the Wetlands Protection Act, not under the local ordinance as well.
So they can't circumvent the WPA, but.
Correct.
But the zoning board can waive some of the um, additional requirements that our local conservation commission um, acts have in, 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 in place.
Correct, correct, yeah.
All right. That's fine. I, I, I'm good with the language.
Um, so number six, uh, this is just, uh, this paragraph is a little bit longer, but it, it notes essentially that the A&R plan, uh, which is part of the uh, schematic plans or before the ZBA, uh, proposes to carve off a piece of the larger Port Plaza property uh, to accommodate what, what's essentially the building footprint with a little bit of, you know, surrounding improvements. Um, and it was suggested in this uh, this section here, uh, which I think was a, a fair amount of, uh, this is, this is remaining some of the comments further down here, like this one. Um, were um, parallel with comments we've seen elsewhere, and I think a notable piece of the plainboard's discussion at the last meeting. Um, it suggested here that there's uh, some connections around the remainder of the site that would be beneficial to tie in. And so um, where the red boundary that we see on the developer's plan, and um, I can just show that briefly for a second, just everybody has that. Um, but that red boundary is sort of um, you know, determined by the applicant essentially um, here. And because it does not, the, the quote-unquote project is not including the driveway, uh, so to speak, or on either side, it sort of plops the building down, the project itself, very close to all that, and doesn't necessarily leave room for a connection. You might see with this sort of typical, you know, streetscape or driveway or um, you know, sort of safety bumpouts and things with these islands that, you know, sort of just dumps into the parking lot. So um, so the suggestion here was just that, you know, that line could be adjusted, I think, in part to uh, allow address, some of those things to be addressed as part of the quote-unquote project, um, as opposed to seeing the project sort of terminating just at the red line, so.
Andy, could you go back to the language?
Yeah, sorry.
So what I would suggest on this, I think this is um, soft pedaling it a little bit. And I think instead of saying the applicant should consider amending at the description of the development parcel, I think I say, I, and even removing the words at this initial stage, I think we should say something more straightforward, like the applicant should expand the development parcel to include, working at flying, you see, to include all necessary um, parking, surface parking and circulation. Something like that.
Agreed. Yep.
Yep, for sure.
I totally agree. There's, there's no way the parcel, as they define it, is acceptable at this stage. And this is one as, where we as planning board, I think, with particular latitude, right? We're still going to be approving the subdivision plan ultimately, right? So.
Yeah.
Also be done by the ZBA. Will the ZBA?
Well, again, it's, it's not, uh, that's, that's one of the things that's sort of brought up by looking, the, one of those zoning board appeals members had asked to see sort of the prior record of permits on the property, which kind of covers subdivision and site plan approval. Um, but that it was, is a related question, because um, the planning board here would be expected after this to only see what's called an approval not required plan, which is essentially just carving off that lot and saying there's enough frontage along Low Street to provide safe access to the lot. So that's not really a just uh, discretionary determination by the planning board. That would be just sort of uh, more of a procedural action by the planning board, because it's dictated directly by the statute. Is there frontage or not? It's there on Low Street, so it's sufficient access. But it, it begs that sort of question about what's the relationship then to the driveway and, you know, is there, are there rights that have to be shared, you know, uh, between, if the parcel's going to be broken off, you know, between parties, uh, to make sure the driveway is serving both entities, essentially your sites, so.
So then, so then as a technical matter, does that mean the ZBA needs to have a finding that an A&R is the correct manner by which to subdivide the parcel?
Uh, not that the A&R is the correct manner so much as that uh, that the, if there was any size limitations to the lot, for instance, that were deficient. I'm not, there's nothing that comes to mind here, uh, uh, it's more the uh, dimensional requirements for the building or the construction itself on the lot. Um, but if this lot was like too small, for instance, you know, that would be something the ZBA would be making a determination on now. And then the planning board would only be looking at that point of, is there ability to get, you know, fire and, you know, public access to the lot, you know, for safe purposes? So again, the planning board's role here would be relatively small at the typical, just is there access to a lot versus the ZBA looking at all the dimensional things that go into a lot size, or in this case, mostly the building size.
So uh, can I ask a, I guess a theoretical, hypothetical question? That the, the ZBA did its thing and the parcel didn't change at all, didn't get the necessary kind of rights off-site to have the parking it needs. We get an A&R plan, would we have any ability to deny that or request modifications to it?
I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not immediately thinking of anything here where there'd be, you know, there's nothing that stands out to me as sort of a, a key or reasonable basis for denying the, the sort of, you know, contemplated A&R plan here, only because the, there's a limited question for the planning board, which is, is there a physical access to the lot that's safe? Um, so you know, um, that has a whole bunch of case law established related to it, that, you know, it's relatively straightforward, I think. Um, so if, that's why it's not necessarily, all right, is it going to be a subdivision per se? That it doesn't seem to come uh, with that path. So while the, they are reviewing the nature of the building on the lot in relation to that A&R plan, and it's not, it's not in my view, something that where they couldn't just come to you now and say, I'd like to break off that, that piece and call it a separate lot. And then, you know, work with that. I, I can see a path for that. The only issue I think that we see there today, for instance, is that part of the building, um, you know, that uh, the, where the, I think it's the Elements Massage maybe. Um, it's in that corner where the Radio Shack used to be. Um, that corner of the building is basically over, going over the lot line. So the old Kmart building crosses, you know, connects and crosses the lot line and goes towards the Shaw's. And so that part of the building is crossing a lot line, that's not something we would see, you know, normally under zoning that way. So for instance, here, um, you know, it's, it's not that the lot can't be accessed, but there's dimensional relief necessary for the building. They, you know, want to, you know, keep or reconstruct or sort of replace there. So.
Right, and then they in our.
Not sure if that helps to clarify, the planning board's role is relatively small, sorry.
And the A&R plan actually won't even show the development, it'll just show the parcels, right? It won't even be.
Co- correct. I mean, you know, we required them to show basic information about the existing lot, but it's not, it's not required to show any proposed development per se. It's required to show that there's access to the lots essentially, yeah.
Guys, I'm gonna have to ring off, so something's come up. No big deal. I'll uh, go over the materials later and check in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Jack.
Uh, sorry, was Rick or anyone else, did you, uh, other questions on six or concerns there? Okay.
I guess I would just say, um, this is, this is kind of a general statement about the size of the parcel. We're going to be getting into the actual circulation and parking issues later on in the memo, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so seven is open space and lot coverage calculations, I think. So seven is open space and lot coverage calculations. I think Rick, Rick mentioned this, is that there's, they're not actually calculating, the, the numbers that you see in the table, for instance, aren't necessarily calculated the way that the zoning ordinance, you know, dictates they should be done, so. And I'll defer to Rick and others on this, but I think the point here was just that. If the board is considering, you know, this project, looking at it in terms of plans or granting waivers. The, the calculations essentially should reflect the ordinance and the project on the plans. So where rooftop open space might be shown or calculated as part of that ground level essentially. That that could, should be reconciled in the numbers regardless of what's ultimately approved and defer to Rick and others if I got that correctly, but.
Yeah, I think that the, the key point here is that maybe. The zoning board doesn't deal with. The open site, open space percentages, the way the planning board does in site plan review. And, you know, they might, if we didn't say something about this, they might be persuaded. By the applicant's attorney who says that, you know, regardless of what the zoning says, this, this works as open space. And I think whether it's functional as open space is different from whether it is legally open space. And so I think that we should, you know. The, the waiver should show. The extent of departure from the ordinance. Whether, whether or not the waiver is good or bad. It should be, you know, kind of honest in what it's saying about how far it's departing from the.
And I think as a board relative to our, you know, review of future projects, we should have a consistent point of view relative to this. You know, consistent with the zoning ordinance. So. I think raising it and, and, you know, asking that they, they correct the data for the project is absolutely the right thing to do.
Okay. Number eight. This is getting, and we're starting to talk about Low Street traffic entrance. So. You know, talking about the safety of the intersection, the traffic congestion that happens there. And some of the volume that's there today. And then there's a, in B, and that's an A, in B. Comments about the garage entrances being close to the street there, and then the sort of queuing and turning of vehicles and how that might cause additional congestion. There. C is talking about the garage entrance and just not necessarily coordinated with one of the other drawing sheets. So it's some discrepancies, this comes up periodically and. Obviously want to have one consistent set of plans at the end of the day.
I, I, the, the only question I have on this, Andy, is I think relates to. Paragraph A. And it's. I don't know how much discussion there has been about. The, the existing traffic volume. Versus the expected traffic volume from this project, but I, I'm, I'm wondering. How the other board members feel about being more specific about the fact that. That currently the Kmart project is not contributing any traffic. To, to, to Low Street, to this intersection. So, so we're comparing. The traffic generated by, you know, this 212-unit development. To, to a site which currently is generating zero traffic volume. So I, I, I kind of remembering statements. That, that may have been made in ZBA meetings about, you know. Assessing this relative to the historic traffic volumes generated by Kmart. Versus the, the traffic volumes for the 212-unit development. I, I don't, I don't think that's an accurate way to look at this right now relative to the existing condition for the site.
I would, I would add two things to that. I mean, I agree with you, but two additional points. One is that looking at historic traffic volumes. We're not look, I don't think they've been looking at historic traffic volumes on Low Street. So what was the volume? Of through traffic on Low Street at the time Kmart was active? Is it the, you know, has, has traffic on Low Street increased since then? And, you know, if we were looking. What are, what are the conditions? That were, what are the actual? Environmental conditions now compared to what they were looking at when Kmart was active? I think the other point, I'm not sure exactly how to phrase that, but. The other point is that the character of residential traffic is different than the character of. Traffic going to retail stores, the hours and days and everything. So I think that it's not just new traffic volume, it's new and different traffic volume, or different, new traffic volume and different. Traffic hours, peaking, peaking patterns, whatever the verb is.
Just a question, just to understand what might be added or tweaked here, you know, if something's appropriate here. I don't know how familiar each member might be, there's, because there's been some traffic information, several sets of traffic information that have been posted to the opening of record from the applicant and then from the peer review consultant. So I don't know if you're familiar with the. You know, expectations of revised data, some of the exchange of that, you know, backup data. And then the, the way the analysis was done, different times a day, for instance, things like that, you know, prior Kmart use versus. You know, other sort of present conditions and what, data and whatnot. And the suggestions that were made by the traffic consultant T E C. For some similar, you know, driveway, you know. You know, entrance type improvements, things like that. So I don't know, I just wanted to make sure folks have seen that as well, because I don't want to inform your comments or relate to your comments here.
I, I had a question about this one, Andy, you, I would think the answer. Is there any concept of the use of the Kmart having been abandoned at this point, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's been, Rick's earlier comment, I think, the, you know, sort of the question there, what's the appropriate reference point? Is it, you know, Kmart being open previously when it was full and active? Is it the present conditions that are there today? Is it looking at the whole plaza in Low Street? Was it the right time of day, for instance?
No, I mean, but just technically, you know, I, I. I don't, I think the answer is probably no, it hasn't been abandoned, but I just wanted, I'm just curious if anyone's looked into that, like has. If someone go in there and reopen a Kmart today, if they wanted to.
I don't think there's much of a, a concern there about sort of losing the right to keep a retail use in that space. There, there is that sort of, have you abandoned something for a couple of years? But I don't know what the extent to which they pulled building permits or different things that have gone on in that building. You know, to sort of, you know, keep it up or maintain it, but there's, there, there's probably some grounds for that to not have been abandoned and under, you know, without any question, you know, from. The way that that's typically interpreted and applied under the ordinances and the case law. So that doesn't, you know, flag to me as, as a question, the abandoned use. So much as what is the right reference point for traffic, you know, as a comparison, you know, previous use when it was active versus today. That was brought up at least, so.
Well, I think that the data for the actual open use being that it was, what now, eight years since it closed. And Kmart at its peak had a lot of traffic in and out of it, but the population is, is 20% higher in the report than when Kmart was at its peak. So I think the data for the numbers is very skewed. It's hard to get a good number, so they have to go by what we have for real time data as far as the. Queuing at the cycle, at the certain, you know, intersections and the peak times like three o'clock and such. It's really hard, I think, this far out to gauge what it would have been like peaks since it's been abandoned for so long.
To me, the Kmart traffic, the historic traffic volume is kind of immaterial at this point. It gets kind of what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we want to say this directly as a board or not, but from my point of view. This, you know, the, this new project should be looked at relative to the current existing condition on the site.
I agree.
Includes the tra, current traffic volumes on Low Street. It includes the amount of traffic generated by this particular site. You know, the empty Kmart building, which is, is really zero at this point. And now we're adding. You know, the traffic generated by 212 residential units. And, and to Rick's point. That the nature of that traffic is different than retail traffic. It, it has peak traffic flows in the morning particularly. And to some degree later on in the day, at the end of the day, but it's very different from the way retail traffic behaves. So I think to, to me, that, that, the baseline for comparison is the current condition on the site. But I, I agree also that we should make a very clear statement that the nature of traffic. Generated by the residential development is very different from, from retail traffic generally.
Is the only entrance? And exit, exit. On the left side or was that north side of the building for the parking underneath? Is that?
No.
That's gonna work, or is it also?
No, there's two.
East and west, I guess, if you want to call it that, but both ends of the building have parking access.
And I bring that up because I feel it kind of. Folds into what we're talking about right now. It's a little bit of a different traffic pattern because. Normally you don't see people coming in and out of. Again, I don't know what that is, east side of the building. That's more for deliveries now, right? But there's going to be increase of traffic flow over there. So I don't know if that's helpful or hurtful, or, or if they could set up.
That's a good point. That's an excellent point, Charlie, because the T E C, the most recent report indicates that they encourage use of that east side more. Or equal to the west side one for that very reason.
That's right, yeah.
Well, maybe.
And all of that, all of that is, is the traffic that's generated by this new project, which should be assessed in a traffic study. You know, I, I, I agree that the traffic is, is maybe distributed here between these two entrances, that's fine, but it still needs to be looked at in terms of an overall traffic study. And its impacts on the intersection at Low Street. Which may be signalized, how it impacts traffic, you know. In general on Low Street, if people are coming out of that other entrance on the, on the east end. And taking a, a left turn and going the other way on Low Street, then, then, you know, you, you've got an interesting traffic situation there as well. So. All of that should be addressed in the traffic study. My only point is that should be looked at and the, you know, the, the existing condition that they should be talking about is the current. Condition, which is, you know, the traffic on Low Street and the traffic that's generated by this site currently, which is, is zero.
Well, so. One of my thoughts is, I don't know how much influence we have over this, or, or something that we would consider to maybe, you know, guide them. And especially from people who live in the area and we know how the traffic works over there with Hodges trying to get out. You know, I'm, I'm always trying to run out of China Walk as fast as I can. And it's really hard to get in and out. But if we. Encourage them to use, am I saying this right? If I'm facing the, is the east side of the building closer to like, you know, the Mullen, Knock Mullen, right? One. The thought of, say, a traffic signal there, okay? And staging or whatever, and, and encouraging or maybe even insisting that the outflow. Of the, you know, residents has to come from the east side of the building. Utilize a traffic signal. You know, to the east side of the building, which would stave off some of the. You know, excess of traffic patterns, I'm thinking, because a lot of people try to turn left. Into the plaza, that's not going to change, right? And so I just see a lot of, a big conundrum. Of traffic and congested in across of the Hodges area. And, and, and the more I look at this, it's just going to be a little bit of a nightmare, in my opinion. And, and Rick's right, the, the traffic pattern is going to be really heavy, eight to nine thirty in the morning. And then maybe again, you know, four thirty to, you know, six, when Matt gets home.
I would argue that definitely we've discussed the signal as, as a given, that it's necessary, but alternatively, I would. I would like the city to look at a roundabout instead and pedestrian. Signal away from the roundabout, and the roundabout is a, is a preferred method for transportation planners. To slow and stop queuing. And it keeps traffic moving. It's also less maintenance long-term for the city, having to monitor the cycle. Of the actual signal and also the electrical costs associated with it. The problem with this particular project is there's not a lot of real estate, so there would be some taking involved in that. And that's a sore subject because they already want the city to pay half the cost of the signal installation and then be responsible for the signal for the rest of its life. I would argue this would be an area that maybe we should explore a roundabout as possible, if, if we could. And then do a separate pedestrian crosswalk with a pedestrian signal only. Off, away from a safe distance from the roundabout. And then I would also go so far as to suggest that the west entry by China. Walk is a right turn only and a right turn in, no left turns in or out. And then that east entry, where the, obviously the delivery and the access to the garage is a left turn in and a left turn out with no signal. Any thoughts?
I, I hear what you're saying, Matt. My, my only concern is that we're not traffic engineers.
Correct.
And, and I, relative to this first bullet point. We're trying to identify, you know, the, the, the sort of baseline for assessing this and, and raise the concern that, that this. Type of traffic for this type of project is different than retail. I, I would, I would hesitate to get into proposing. Specific solutions for the traffic. That's, that's for the traffic engineers to figure out. What we're saying here. Is we, we want you to consider. The information in this way, the existing condition in this way. And we want you to, to remind you that the traffic is residential traffic, not, not retail traffic. Beyond that, I, I'm not sure we want to get into proposing specific solutions for these intersections because I don't think we have the expertise to do it. I know I don't.
I agree with the general knowledge. I'm kidding. Maybe we say traffic pattern there.
Uh, sorry, residential traffic patterns?
Yeah, at the end.
Oh, sorry. Patterns, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. Whatever you guys want to do on that, I'm fine.
I, I kind of agree with, with Bob in terms of the, the question of. Intersection versus roundabout and not being, not being able to design things. I do think that we're, we're going to want to say something about signalization. Which is a specific thing, and I, that's one of the. The sticking points, and I, I assume that's coming up later, but the, you know, the, the, that, that signalization is. Is warranted and should, should be implemented as part of this project. I think that should be a strong statement.
Sorry, just that the signal, you want that, Rick, is what you're suggesting?
I think you're talking about that somewhere else, right?
Suggest, suggest that intersection be signaledized. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, sorry, it's a good point.
If it's not, let's put it in.
Is it addressed? I guess not, okay.
That was one of the things that, that I know there's a, some kind of disagreement and the developer wants to do. Quote, fair share, end quote, contribution. I'm afraid that if, if that happens, it's never going to happen because the city won't come up with its funds. So I think we need to say. That signalization is required for safety purposes. And I think, I think tech. Said that.
Yes.
We should support that.
All right, I don't use this.
And for our own record, I, I do like what Matt's suggesting about. Only left, only right, depending on the inflow and outflow. It'll make a big difference. It'll make people think about whether or not to go down Low Street.
I don't think you can have three intersections that can all go left and right in such a busy area. I think you have to. Have at least one of them a right, you know, right and a right only, preferably that west one, because it is such a blind turn anyway as it is. It's a tough location. That, that turn is very difficult as it is now. The east side will have to have full access because of deliveries cut through, there's people going, you know, cyclists will come in and out of there. That central one is the, is the primary focus of, they, and they feel no matter what is done with this project, that central. Entrance and exit will see of two, at least two thirds to three quarters of the volume of that. Entire housing facility based on its location. Being central.
I, I think, sorry, I think that there was a discussion at a previous meeting. About. Potentially shifting that central driveway. A little bit to the west and potentially closing off the west driveway altogether. I, I don't recall the specifics, but I think that came up and, you know, that, again. I agree that that west. Driveway should probably be only right in, right out, but I guess the question is whether it's still needed. I think that was, that was raised in the memo at some point, I believe.
All right.
Did, is there anything in terms of the language list that is missing that someone feels like, you know, should be added or I didn't capture correctly or? I was trying to follow with all those suggestions and comments and sort of weave in together as best, but.
I think we got it. You guys think that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's all right.
All right, so.
I guess I would just, I guess I would just go back to the signalization question and. And I would, I would want to look at our recommendations compared to what tech said. Because. Here it feels like it's. Tagged on to the end of another paragraph. And if it's, it, it, it would feel different if we said. And if it's, it, it, it would feel different if we said, if we had a separate paragraph, you know, a separate item about that. I'm not sure we.
Like D?
Right now you've got item C, you have something specific about, well, maybe item B, I guess, where you say consider relocation further. When you're talking specifically about entrances and exits and how to change that. A is more like a general statement about traffic volumes and patterns. And it isn't specific to the, the driveway entrance. I thought there should be something about a specific bullet about the driveway entrance. And I don't know whether you have one later on or not. But that's, that, that, that intersection of the main driveway with Low Street deserves its own bullet.
Well, i- if I, if I'm not missing something, the T E C comments did suggest there was a more, uh, recent letter that the Z B A had gotten right before, the night, the day before, or the day, uh, the morning of, I guess, the Z B A meeting. Um, which I think included, you know, more particularly had suggested the same, uh, you know, piece here about a signalization or controlled intersection there. So I don't know if, if it addresses your concern to just sort of tag on to that, you know, as, as suggested in the T E C, you know, peer review letter or something like that, but it, um, it, it is, it does seem to me that that's consistent with something that, um, T E C had, had suggested be done here.
Andy, why don't we start by making that last sentence, item B, paragraph B?
Okay.
And just add that and then B will change to C, C will change to D. Yeah.
Okay.
Now, as Rick is saying, now, now we've made that clear statement, which is a detailed statement uh, about the intersection and, and is followed by detailed statements about the garage entrances.
Yeah.
Paragraph A is more of a general, you know, comment about things.
Yep. Of this, uh, central driveway entrance, or want to add that in the central driveway entrance of Low Street on B?
Yeah, I think it's worth just, you know, yeah, obvious enough, but yeah.
The T E C report is very thorough. I read through it and I feel, I agree with just about every aspect of it. I think there's some excellent recommendations there so far.
Um, yeah, and just to my knowledge, and, uh, uh, one hundred percent agree with the, you know, the comments and the discussion here. Um, to my knowledge, although the comments, they've seen the more recent comments from T C, to my understanding, there is still isn't indication that they're uh, interested in doing these improvements, but you know, obviously this is the focal point for everybody, uh, given as, as you're all discussing here.
Yeah, they also raised some excellent points about the rest of the plaza and the access, all, a lot of the things that we discussed at our last meeting about how it's tons of room for improvement there too.
Right.
I, I would also, I'm just kind of trying to leave through the tech report, the most recent one. And they specifically call out this, um, statement about fair share and say it's peculiar because the traffic signal is basically required for this development. So I think that we could strengthen our statement by kind of referring to the tech, tech report.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, nine gets into some of the similar sort of pedestrian level improvements, um, that, you know, where the, it was discussed earlier by some of the members, just the fact that the building kind of fills the proposed lot. And so there's not much site to work with to integrate. And so, um, just, you know, comments on some of that.
I agree with that.
It overlaps with the comments from T C. They had a sketch map that they attached their most recent letter, um, sketching out how they thought. You know, there's various different varieties or on a variations of a theme. But they had basically sketched out how some of the end islands of the parking bays could be, you know, closed off or connected or adjusted. For instance, uh, where sort of walkways or sidewalk connections could be better made, um, and some reconfiguration of parking spaces. And I would suggest that that's the perfect layout per se, but it, it suggested that there's some alternatives that could be done that are beneficial to the connectivity of this particular building to the remainder of the site and the, the area. So.
Um, again, I think, uh, this, this relates to the, those, um, surface handicap parking spaces as well as the, you know, the in, internal, uh, handicap spaces. And I think that, I don't know whether it's, it would be helpful either as part of this paragraph or somewhere else to talk about making sure that handicap spaces that serve the development are adjacent to the development, not across the street.
Yeah, I think that is ca, I feel like for some reason we captured that in one of these bullets, but.
It's, yeah, it is.
It is in there somewhere. I, I know we had that comment. Um, oh, it was on the, uh, enlarging the parcel, the, uh, so to speak, uh.
That kind of implied it, but I'm not sure that it actually said, does it actually say that?
And your offsite parking spaces dedicated to the project. So here, those are the ones that you're not, are commenting on our, according to them, those are offsite because they're, to your point, in the Shaw's parking lot, not in the.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is it doesn't say, put the handicap spaces next to the building. And you know, it's, it's, they're right across, they're across the street from the building right now. So I, it, I think this is, the intent of it is here. It doesn't, it's not really, I think this may go into the.
Yeah. Okay. You want to back up there in the?
So the.
No, down where you were.
Item eight is about the size of the parcel. I think when you get that, or item six or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah. So you want it in which one? Sorry.
It should have to do, we, we're down where we were talking before, uh, you know, down at the bottom, down below.
Okay. So down here.
Maybe in this section between nine and ten, there should be something about making sure that, um, anything needed to serve the building is, 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 you know, including handicap parking spaces um, are, are adjacent to the building. And, you know, basically what they're trying to do is they're trying to avoid changing the, this, the circulatory layout adjacent to the driveway. And I'm not sure they can get away with that and still have a, have a decent project.
They, they have, to satisfy the mass, uh, access board, they'd have to demonstrate a an accessible route.
Yeah, this is quite obviously not, uh, I think, you know, I haven't heard from the accessibilities coordinator for the city, um, but as the assistant billing inspector. But I confident that this is, uh, already an issue under the billing code, so, um, the accessible nature of it, so. Uh, T C had commented that they could actually flip, you know, to the earlier suggestion that Rick had made about the driveway where it meets Low Street. You know, if that driveway entrance, that, you know, even shifted, uh, you know, a bit, the same thing, for instance, could be done. Uh, I'm not necessarily suggesting you that to be done here, but the, if that was done on the parking bays where the Shaw's is, uh, on that side of the proposed building, that, um, that that would allow the parking, parking space to be up against the building. And so, um, you know, you'd have a sidewalk there along the building frontage and then parking spaces there as opposed to having to cross the driveway entirely to get to any parking. So that could be where some of those spaces go.
Yeah, to Jamie's point, I don't think that, I might be wrong, but I don't think that a route from one lot to another lot without going to a public way is an accessible route. And I might be wrong about that, but.
Yeah, that, it, it stuck out to me as something that might be just from a basic, you know, state, state accessibility, uh, requirements wouldn't make sense. Uh, never mind, you know, local site plan review, so. Uh, was anything else we missed in nine? Some of, uh, you know, ten and eleven, both dealing a little bit of sidewalk and street tree standards. And again, consistency between the plans, so.
Were we suggesting a more westerly alignment of that main road away from the building to accommodate more a wider entry into the parking garage and maybe a little bit further out? I know that was the discussion we had briefly. Rick was bringing it up last week, like, you know, maybe move that center entrance to the west a little bit entirely to have some more room to work with. It's very close to the structure as it stands.
Yeah, I think that the, we've talked about, there are a couple of options. One is to do that, to shift the driveway west. The other would be to somehow, uh, insert the, the, the dry garage doors further into the building, but deal with the, to, and to move the dry, to move the driveway.
Further north.
Move the driveway north, which increases the slope, so then you have to indent the driveway under the building more, which loses parking spaces. So it's, it's a tough balancing act. It's just that they're trying to get a lot of stuff into that space. At, at the very least, I think that the, the drive, and I, I think we've already said that, right? Move the, move the garage entrance north.
Yeah.
So a more westerly alignment of the roadway potentially could offset the change in slope, but they would definitely be losing a lot more parking on that, on those west shops.
Yep.
Yeah. It's already a tight entry between the corners of the buildings too, with the, uh, plans as it is, that proposed structure on the existing west shops. There's actually not a lot of room between them at that edge, that corner. Already.
So I'm not hearing, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not hearing a hundred percent confidence in the idea of including, uh, suggestion that the driveway be, the primary driveway be shifted per se. Um, it's more sort of up in the air, there's pros and cons or? Or, or is there, is that something that we should add here in maybe perhaps?
I think when we talk about solutions related to the, the garage entrance, we could say that, you know, regrading of that, that entrance drive or relocation of that entrance drive further to the west could be considered as part of that solution.
Right. I think that, I, yeah, again, we, you're right that we, we can't come up with a solution ourselves. But I think if we identify moving that garage entrance further north away from Low Street, and there are a number of ways to deal with that, one of which could be shifting the, the driveway.
Yeah, I think we could say they could consider those as options.
That sounds good.
Could also be considered.
Okay, could also be.
To, to allow for, uh, transition into a relocated garage entrance.
I can scroll up or down, but anything we missed in there? Go back down to where we were here, I think. So we're just on these two?
So we, we're just trying to reference, you know, if we're, if we're suggesting a standard sidewalk and street tree detail, um, just trying to reference something that exists now in the zoning ordinance that, that they could look at. And the most logical example is the smart, smart growth district. Uh, so just referencing that as, as, you know, a possible template for, you know, the, the public realm of the project.
So are we not, um, setting any standards here at all? We're not, we're not saying five foot sidewalks with five foot, with, you know, some kind of.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, that's, we could say, you know, for example, you know, minimum sidewalk width of, or something like that, if that's what you're, um, you want to call it some specifics.
So I had, I had suggested, um, and I'm not saying this has, this is necessarily the, the correct thing, but I would, I think I had suggested five foot sidewalks and five foot bike lanes along the, uh, property frontage. And then there's the question of what happens in terms of a tree belt in that area.
Uh, okay, yeah. How are you, sorry, go ahead.
Our number 11, the inconsistency of the plans, it, it would seem that as if that some of the plans show the existing trees which are mature on the actual property as being left there, but I don't see any way that they could do a project of this scale and maintain the integrity of those same trees. But there's a nice row of mature trees not far from the sidewalk right now.
Yeah, that, I don't see that that, I think that's more just calling out discrepancy in plans because to your point, it's not feasible to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is a shame because they are all in great health, all the way down the whole row. But yeah, they, they will infringe on the site boundaries. Uh, yeah, I think that the city would probably be best to propose a you know, trees in between the sidewalk and street in consistency with the current tree plan.
I think that the current landscape plan that they've submitted, uh, doesn't really address street trees particularly at all. Uh, some of the architectural plans, as, as you're saying, Matt, show, show trees, some of which may be existing. But I think we want to say, you know, there, there needs to be a standard for sidewalks that, that could work as we expand and, and look at this overall district. Uh, and I'm, I'm fine with five feet as a minimum, but we also need, uh, street trees, which means there's, there's a, a, a landscape zone, a planting zone between that pedestrian five foot zone and, and the curb of the street. Uh, and then to Rick's point, if we want to also address bike lanes, that, that would happen, I guess, outside of the curb, Rick? Uh, in the street?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So.
T E C suggested also look in, looking into the possibility of a separate shared use path. I, I don't, it doesn't sound like this particular site plan will be able to accommodate that, but it's something that's worth looking into as well, like a, a typical shared use path that would be two way uh, on one side of the street too, that we could possibly connect to a future extension of it. Uh, but that's obviously complicates the project and, and that we don't know if that'll go that direction.
The base, the baseline for me in this is we, we have said above that we think you need streets and sidewalks on two sides of this project. So, so then I think we need to identify the appropriate character of, of the sidewalk environment. Uh, the width of the sidewalk, the fact that that sidewalk environment should include street trees. We talk about street lights in one of the next paragraphs. Uh, but we want to talk about the, the character of the sidewalks then, that, that we are recommending that they include around the perimeter of their part of the project. So the, the reference here, and I, I, I guess I want to just address whether this is the appropriate reference as a starting point. Um, should we say that, that the smart growth district is, is, you know, where those appropriate standards are, are already established?
Yes. So I don't think you necessarily have to limit yourself to that. And I think you could use it as an example, but I think it's helpful in the context of forty B and other related case law, just because it's an established, uh, ordinance. It's something, um, already where projects have been permitted, you know, and, and that works.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and, and it's now the right permit process. So I think it, it does make a lot of sense to use it, even if it's just as an example.
So I don't know what the, what those standards are. I mean, I, I guess I, you know, when, when you look at their plans and they have, um, they have, as somebody mentioned, they have no street trees. All their trees are on private property and their sidewalk is abut, abutting the curb. I, I don't know how that relates to what would be allowed in the smart growth district. You go down Boston Way and there are, you know, there are places where what they have on this plan might work. So I don't know whether those, whether, when three Boston Way, one Boston Way was permitted, whether the planning board granted waivers from its standards or whether that met the standards.
Yeah, I, there might've been like one or two minor ones in the site level, uh, standards being waived there. But, um, I guess to your point, I was just trying to add a couple of phrases there just to kind of, um, to your point, just kind of nuanced, recognizing the fact that this might be an example of, of places where our best practices are found, but it's not the full extent of, you know, or we might think of other, uh, like it might be six feet, you know, for us moving forward versus a five feet reference we had previously. So, uh, to your point, maybe we just say, you know, sidewalk design should consider best practices. Um, uh, sorry, sidewalk design should consider best practices. Um, such as those already established in the new report zoning under the smart growth district as opposed to kind of, um, you know, suggesting that that's the only, what they find in that section, the only set of, you know, standards, so.
And if you include accommodation for adjacent tree planting strips, I would clarify it by saying between the sidewalk and the street. Uh, that's.
Uh, oh, okay.
Yeah. Can, this is, this is just language in here, but effort should be made to include sidewalks and bike lanes surrounding the proposed project and abutting driveways, both of which should have minimum width of five feet. Okay. I think that gets us there.
And for number.
Oh, should we go to, sorry?
Well, I was gonna say for number eleven.
Yeah.
Um. You you could even be more specific to say that the architect architectural plan shows street trees and the landscape plan doesn't. So so, you know, we should, we should make sure that street, you know, it's, it isn't that they're just. The land, the land, the landscape plan doesn't show any street trees.
Yeah.
That capture what we're talking about.
Well, I guess I I guess it's more than that, is that the architectural drawings show street trees. And the landscape plan shows trees that are not street trees that are on private properties, you know, it's it's not that.
Oh, oh, I see, I see what you're saying. Um, I gotcha. Um.
So I I would um. I would say the final, the, you know, the plan should, it goes back to that previous uh statement in number. Ten, the last statement about accommodation for adjacent tree planting strips. Um, and maybe you want to combine that that phrase with this one. It's kind of hard to to draft it on the fly, but.
That capture uh.
Versus should have a second, the second E versus should be you.
Oh.
V S period.
Long day.
Yeah, okay.
Do we go to twelve or?
Yeah. The lighting is really undefined. Um, both street lighting and and lighting that might be mounted on the building. Or just on the building somehow, uh, it's just not defined yet at all.
And we don't want the lighting consistent with a plaza.
Think twelve thirteen, sorry, is pretty self explanatory.
So so let me just pause there for a second.
Yeah.
And I can't remember what the monument sign looks like. Is this?
It's only shown in their renderings.
In the entrance.
It's not on the plans, it's not on the landscape plan. Uh, it's only shown in the renderings. Uh, yeah, you can see it right there.
And then there's another one at the circle.
That could be a block to visual, you know, for cars coming out, looking for cars coming.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Any comments on the sign on the side of the building that they have proposed in the in that architectural? It's not a monument sign, but it's a very large sign on the corner of the structure.
Sorry, say again.
Any comments from the board on the the sign that they have on the actual building on the corner on the north and west quadrant? Um, that's in the plans, is that anything that we comment on or?
Vertical?
Yeah, the vertical.
Yeah.
Just curious what the board thinks on that one.
Can I see that?
Yeah, I just see if I can find that one uh.
That'd make more work for you.
Nah, no worries, I just, you're like trying to have everything, oh, here we go. Not sure if this is the exact one you're thinking of, but here's one, there might be another one, I think, at the other.
Yeah, that's the one right there, yeah.
I I have no particular issue with it myself, but um but I, you know. We can obviously, we talk about whether it complies with the zoning and all that kind of stuff, but I don't have any issue with it from a conceptual perspective, but.
So if you're, if we're saying, if we're saying that the monument. That the the sign ordinance should be complied with for the monument sign. I guess the question, you're right, the question is, does this comply also? Or is that a waiver from the zoning, from the zoning ordinance? Are they submitting that as part of their application? The in their in their architectural and do they have, do they have any sign package at all?
Haven't seen any of this in the architectural drawings. It just shows up in the rendering.
Just the renderings, yeah.
Should we, should the? Where um, I guess I'm concerned that. If something's in the rendering and it's not in a plan. Are we approving that? I mean, is the zoning board approving that rendering?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's an argument here that deference is given to the approval of whatever is presented there, and it might be the additive in that case. But um that would just be a starting point, um, given the forty B context, but at the same time, to your point, that's why you you've commented before about consistency between plans and. Um, you know, and things like that, because obviously we all want to know what we're expecting to see down the road, and so. If something shows up on a drawing sheet where you might not expect it, for instance, and it's there, and then it, you know, shows up in the field and. Yeah, so.
Do we, do we want to make that statement that in general uh signage depicted in architectural renderings? Uh, is is not. Described in any specific detail in the architectural plans. Uh, and and should be reviewed relative to the city signage regulations?
Yeah, definitely.
Um, I think we take up proposals, right, Rick? Because uh. Irrespective of the date of adoption, I think all that nonsense, I think it's pretty. Would make more sense to just say city signage regulations.
I defer to Charlie on that question. What do you, from the legal standpoint, with the proposed and the date of application, are they consistent with the current regulations?
Well, so I, there's very strict signage. Uh, regulations in uh Newbury Port that everybody has to apply for anyhow, so. I feel like I don't know what kind of input they're going to listen to from us.
Hmm.
But the but the comprehensive permit is going to. Uh, any, any. They won't be going back to the zoning board for a sign permit, right?
I thought they had to go through City Hall for the sign signage, no?
This is, isn't it?
Yeah, so I, yeah, just to be clear, that the the typical process is that's reviewed through the zoning administrator effectively, the billing office and zoning administrator. Uh, for compliance with that section of the ordinance.
But in this case.
In this case, the Z B A would be effectively approving in advance whatever, you know, scope of allowance for signage is in there, so to Rick's point, so.
So they potentially could waive.
Yeah, they could waive through this, so to Rick's question, you know, if the the signs shown on the plans here, the renderings even, you know, and they're not. Consistent with the zoning regulations, the presumption here is that that's being mechanically waived by the Z B A as part of this approval, which is why, of course, there's. Always an examination to see, right, does the, or is every waiver that's required for this project actually properly listed in the waivers list that they've, you know, submitted, things like that, so.
Could we?
I think I have the waiver list here.
Yeah, I I I wouldn't necessarily rely upon that waiver list, uh, sort of like a couple of pages in there for that particular purpose. I think it's it's too fine a grain, I think, to see in there. Um, and I don't take, I certainly recognize you could have a lengthy table further in the. Applicants materials identifying all these points, uh, and you're all right to identify them. Um, I tend not to. You know, pause on each of those smaller points, I think the, I think you're, you're covering the ground sufficiently, in my view, if you cover the main points here, which is, you know. Consistency with the regulations and, you know, sight lines and things like that, rather than um. You know, having to go into that finer grain and debate whether it meets every provision that's in those sections and. Recognizing here that it's actually the Z B A that's going to determine at the end of the day, whether any of those things are reasonably acceptable, so. It might be more important that you call out things that you find unacceptable or things that you think should be adhered to, rather than every, you know, provision being complied with, so to speak.
And what if we, what if we eliminate the second sentence?
Yeah, I was just thinking.
Kind of repetitive with the first and.
Yeah, I was thinking of um modifying that to a different uh piece, I know Rick had mentioned.
Could we say materials and details for signage are not called out in the current architectural drawings?
Not specified.
Classified, called out, specified, what, yeah, specified is fine.
Well, that's, it's, it is the architectural renderings, right?
Well, architectural drawings, I'm, you know, that's, that's where you would actually see materials and.
Yeah, okay.
Man, they call out. And specifics and on the architectural drawings, but, you know, they're they're silent on the signage details. But that's where you would see it.
Did we miss anything in that?
I think it's okay.
Looks good.
Um, I have fourteen seems pretty self explanatory. Um, then we get into building design, which is the remaining piece. Um, it goes on that it starts with fifteen here, so. This talks about the ground floor units, I think Bob and others mentioned this at the prior meeting where it turns the corner and goes towards Shaw's. Seeing if they can do anything to make that more sort of quasi-public type space as opposed to residential stoops.
I have a question about whether, and and I think we need to look at the plan, Andy, but whether or not these units are. Are actually under the retail entrance canopies?
Oh, uh, that's interesting and.
Confirm that if we're gonna say it.
Yeah. So, uh, when you say.
The last residential unit is to the left of the Egress stair.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's at a point where it's underneath the retail canopy.
Oh, oh, I see, sorry, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
I would say no, I think, I mean, I think it is outside of the retail.
Yeah, I think, I think we don't need to say that.
So just this, we'll take this piece out here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But definitely some clarification as to what that area is going to look like from a. Public standpoint for the people that live within the building. It seems like they don't have a definitive plan as to access and. The bike stores we talked about, trash and emergency exits to the other side of the building. It seemed like that's kind of just an afterthought area right now in the current plans.
It's a way to get to two hundred and twelve units.
This is true.
If you put a building that size and it fits on the the old Kmart leased area, that's what fits.
Yeah, the fine twenty after that, right?
Um, so sixteen, is that, we go to sixteen?
Yeah.
Like, that's pretty self explanatory, uh, but. So seventeen, um, this is getting a little bit of architectural design and massing. But it's suggesting that they could be broken down even with colors and textures, so.
And I'm I'm fine if people have other points of view about this, that that, you know, I, this is just me saying. You know, that that they they actually, to create more perimeter, they have, they have created these separate wings in the building. Which certainly helps with the overall massing, but then the application of materials doesn't consider that. It's it's kind of smeared generally over the building without differentiating one wing for from another, so I'm just saying. You know, you you're kind of moving in the right direction with with how you've considered the massing on the building, but the materials don't really reflect that.
I'll just say for myself, I take no issue myself with the sort of uh materials palette selection, so to speak, uh, in that range, I defer you off. Um, it didn't flag for me in sort of looking at the conceptual plan, something that sort of, you know, bothered me, so to speak, but. To, you know, to your point, it's it's a long building, it's a larger building or footprint and extended one, larger than we would see, you know, approved here normally in the reports, so.
Yeah.
Pretty big, so.
I think at the end of the day, it's essentially gonna look a lot like Boston Way, once all is said and done, they're gonna be pretty similar and and look. From the outside.
Certainly some similar facets, the panels and right and the sort of uh.
Yeah.
This, you know, element here, for instance, right, sort of.
Recess.
Recess is a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
So uh, I do we, I'll go back to the letter, I don't know if you want to make tweaks to or additions to that area. I think it, I think Bob's captured it here from what I can tell. All right, so eighteen. Uh, I was talking about fiber cement board and um using some other potential colors.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I I'm not arguing against fiber cement board because I understand. There's a budget on this project and, you know, it, I, it is what it is in terms of, you know, materials like this, but. Fiber cement board comes in more colors than gray. And, you know, I think, you know, particularly if you look at the north side of the building. Uh, and you think about the view of this project across the the. The overall development and the view of this project from Story Avenue. Over over half of that very long elevation is gray. Fiber cement panels. And I I I'm not arguing with the material so much as I I'm trying to suggest to them that that. You know, again, maybe, maybe adding some more variety to that. Uh, could help this elevation in some way.
Well, you're looking to break it down more irrespective of the, uh, right, just because it's, it shows us like a large amount of that as a total surface area.
Yeah, I mean, as as they got got into, you know. The elevation that extends down towards that retail that we were talking about a minute ago. Uh, they they kind of lost the brick in the facade and it's the rest of the facade is all cement panel.
Yeah, that retail. It bleeds off right there, yeah.
Facade in the entry recess where the drop off is, a lot of that is also fiber cement panel, so there's a, there's a.
In here.
Out of that wall that 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 material.
Yeah. Right there, yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess the how we word this um statement is is important. Um, because to, on top of what you're saying, Bob, what what jumps out at me is. There is a lot of stuff there that doesn't necessarily go together. I mean, you've got the, you've got. It what it ends up looking like is. Kind of a, almost a cheap thing with a bunch of brick. Paste it onto it to to bring out some brick, so it's got, it's got, it's got that fiber cement, it's got the, I don't know what that is in those. Squares that are surrounded by brick that are separating groups of four windows. Um, I don't know, that's fiber cement also, but the, it it basically looks like there's. Kind of an underlayment with brick pasted onto it. And so it's not so much, I guess what I'm reacting to is the word more colors. It's not that I want more colors, as I want more of the nice colors, yes. I don't think I want to add more colors to this building.
No, they're definitely going for the.
I'm okay with that, I I just, I I would hate to see all of this be a gray palette of material. You're muted, Rick.
Thank you. Um, I wonder if what you're saying is that you want to add some color, some other color. Fiber cement to the gray or whether you want to replace the gray with something else. It's not really clear from the way the statement is written.
I'm I'm suggesting that they replace the gray with their colors.
I would go with that, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, is it, are we saying, I, it seemed to me like that his wording already captures it officially, but maybe I'm missing something, is there, looking for?
I think the the wording could be interpreted. It, I think the, the wording could be interpreted to say, we'll replace some of the gray with a tan. And I, you know, I, I think what we're, what I think we're agreeing on is. Let's get rid of the gray and replace it with something that maybe looks more like a, you know, a concrete or something like that, or, you know, that has a different. Feel to it than the dark gray.
If this is, if different colors is replaced with all, and an alternative to gray. So an alternative.
Maybe take, maybe take the, maybe take that sentence out, the different colors should be considered for such a large building. Cut that out and put it at the, at the end of the paragraph. And then, and then we can, then it make, it might say. Maybe say a different color should be considered. Would that make sense, Bob, to you to say a different color would, should be considered? Or? What you're trying to get at here?
I mean, fundamentally, I, I want to say that, that they, they should replace some of the gray panels with, with an alternate color.
Is that, they should capture it now?
Do you want to specify that northeast quadrant? Where it's predominantly like silver gray at the retail end?
Sorry, you're, what are you saying that about, the, the, this piece?
Do, do we want to specify? It seems like geographically, one of the locations that we have the biggest concern with is that. Blob of silver gray, not even the dark gray, the silver gray on the plaza side where it looks like the plaza kind of just bled into it. And it's just that whole section of residential is that one color. That seems to be one of the biggest. Problem areas we have as far as this, do we want to specify that specific location? When we discuss possible change of colors there, um, because the rest of the development seems to be somewhat consistent. That seems to be one of the biggest areas of like, we just got a big gray panel here.
And I agree with the sentiment that there's enough variety of color already. It's just better colors instead of more colors.
Yes. Different colors should be considered for such a large building, uh, rather than the gray panels?
Well, too, we also want to clarify, there are two different color gray in this design. Um, the darker gray is less. Obtrusive, uh, you know, and it's more modern looking, obviously, that. Kind of silver gray, that, you know, titanium gray, looks like it basically is just leftover panels from the Shaw's side. Um, but that overwhelms that corner where it just kind of sits with no delineation. There's no. Differences there. So that's one of the areas I think that we have to maybe hone in on is like, that should be an area that should be adjusted to.
This is where it gets very subjective because I, I sort of have the opposite point of view, which is. Really don't like the amount of dark gray that's on this building. I, I, I know what you're talking about, Matt, and, and there are places where that can feel more contemporary and if it's. And some of this is actually a gray collaborative kind of detail. Um, which the collaborative detail, I don't particularly object to. But you, you see that dark gray on so many projects now and, and in a limited. Infused in a limited way, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it particularly, but, but there's so much of it here. Uh, and.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I, I just think that it becomes, uh, you know. Kind of an.
And Bob, I don't, I don't suggest putting more of that on, um, I, I just, I feel like the amount of that in this particular project in general is, is not. Too excessive. I think it's used for depth and that is why it's in some of the, you know, recessed areas. And it, and it's good for that. I don't suggest changing that section down by the old Radio Shack to that color. I, I suggest maybe go more. Brick color down there. Um, and, and definitely if you want to limit the grays for sure. Uh, but more so than titanium gray, because there's just such a big section of it on that side.
Yeah, right. I'm, I'm just reading this one more time. Rather than a different color, Andy, can we say alternate colors should be considered for such a large building in lieu of the gray panels?
Anyone else, uh, see adjustments in that one?
No. That's not, design's not my forte. I'm gonna defer to you guys.
All right, uh, nineteen, clear glass abuse of storefront locations. That should seem obvious enough, but you know, it's come up in downtown once or twice, so.
So it, just, just to clarify, the, all of the residential unit windows are PVC. And the storefront locations are an aluminum storefront system. So I'm using the word storefront here. To identify those, those ground floor conditions where, um, they're using the aluminum storefront system. And that's where they should have cleared glass.
Okay.
Uh, twenty, a roof plan, just to identify mechanical equipment. We just talked about this on Merrimack Street, so, uh, not, uh. Not atypical as in a concern, so just flagging for the ZBA, they might want to get some idea of what's up on the roof and whether there's. Step back from the edge of the roof or things like that, so.
And I, I think the reality of this is, I mean, there was a good solution for this on Merrimack Street, which is, you know, most of this stuff is not on the roof. It's on the back wall. If you look at the, the Boston Place project, uh, and look at. All of those units that are on the roof, that's what we're talking about here. And, you know, the, the question is, and again, part of this is the view of this project as, as you look. Down the hill from, from Story Avenue, do, do we want to look at all of that stuff on the roof? Or do we want to suggest that there should be screening provided related to that? Because there, there will be a lot of stuff on this roof.
There are two things to add to that, um. Should we be specifically saying that a, a view of the building from some direction? Um, you know, from further away that's going to show that should be provided, like these renderings are all pretty close up. We don't have a rendering from a distance. And then the second thing is, um, and I can't remember whether this came up in Newburyport or somewhere else, but, um. What about if they find the need to punch little holes in the side of the building for. Ventilation, you know, they, I, I've seen that happen after the plan was approved where they said, well. Actually, these units need, they can't all be ventilated through the roof. They have to be ventilated through the side of the thing. So, so you don't want to have this flat surface. Um, uh, is there some way that we can be? You know, I, first of all, for those of you who are involved in the building, in the building design, is that something that, um, is something to worry about?
It absolutely is. In fact, if they have washer dryers and units, I bet they will. They're gonna have what people in the apartment industry calls. Facade acne where there's just like. At least a couple penetrations per unit on the.
There will be.
Jamie, uh, are there chases that they could, you know, send out from each unit or is that too challenging giving?
It, it's super challenging because then they have to have fire, fire breaks. It adds a ton of cost and very few developers.
They're, they're with the vents for dryers and things like that, toilet exhaust, things like that. They're gonna go right through the sidewall.
So should those, should those be shown in the plan, on the, on the renderings and plans? Yeah, I think they should. It's a really good point. Because it's, the building's not gonna look like this if that's what happens.
No, you're absolutely right.
All right, did I capture that sufficiently with this?
Yep, that sounds good.
That was our last bullet in there, so I don't know if anybody felt like things are missing, but.
I would make that last sentence, Andy, a different bullet point because there's.
Right.
Yeah. There's the roof plan and then there's the building operations that don't, all of the penetrations that will be required.
Yeah, yeah.
When you, when you say verify at this time, should, should it say the, the plans, the plans should show?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just get everything from, just replace the applicant's design team should verify at this time, just say the plan should show. Yeah. Would you go as far as saying that developers should take a keen interest in making sure that they use whatever modern. Technology to reduce, you know, the exterior, um. Utilities.
The, I, I, they won't. I hear what you're saying and I, I absolutely agree with you, but, um, it. Just look at, look at residential projects like this around and you're gonna see this stuff on the sidewall and every single one of them.
Yeah.
As, you know, as Jamie's saying, there's just, there's, there's, there's no cost effective solution to take this stuff quickly up through the roof. Uh, and, and so you, you just put a wall cap on and, you know, you, you exhaust everything out the sidewall and it's just. And, and in fifty to sixty percent of the units, it looks like a, a repetitive. You know, thought, thought out location and everything, you know, you can sort of accept that it is what it is. And then the rest of those units, it, it doesn't land in the right place because of the layout. Because of how it relates to the facade and there's, there's always a bunch of these things that you wish could just be somewhere else. And, and they're not. And with a building with this much complexity and ins and outs and inside corners and everything. They're, they're not gonna land in a logical place every time, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's much we can do about it other than to ask them to show it so that the ZBA understands clearly. What it is we're talking about here in terms of the reality of this thing.
And you can't insist on laundry facilities in various locations in the building, right?
I, I think that's a little too particular for the forty B process for the ZBA to be dictating that, but, um. But it, I, it, it's worth noting, I guess, just for context, the, um, the applicant had also amongst the waivers asked for a waiver of chapter five. Of the city's general regulations, not zoning, but general. Um, that section includes the, um, what's referred to as this now, the specialized code. As opposed to the stretch energy code, and it was called previously, um, and it's sort of a progressive energy efficiency, essentially, um, sort of upgrade to the basic. State, you know, threshold, um, it was adopted here locally and so, um, although we don't have, um. I, and it asked attorney me to clarify what, what in that section specifically they're looking for waivers from because it just lists chapter five without any, um, further. Identification of subsections that they think are at issue. Um, so because that section is relatively new and. Uh, wasn't sure if that was clear enough, whether, what, to what extent that was included in there. I asked her to clarify, still waiting for a response on that. Uh, uh, but, um, but just wanted to note here because it seems like that might be related to one or another, the sort of. Mechanicals, the insulation, you know, design of the building and so forth. Um, I don't know, because it's a relatively new code, whether or not the architectural team is spending time. Trying to sort through the implications, one or the other about, about those things and how it might overlap with some of these things.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have Bob's name correctly spelled down below?
Yeah, did we, did we miss anything?
Rick.
So we just, and I just put, uh, as the CCs, I suggested obviously the mayor, city council, um, and just to obviously his context. Um, and Lisa Mead, who's the attorney representative for the applicant, uh, they're gonna see that as part of the public record, but we, when it's uploaded to OpenGov anyway, the, which is the. Placement for all the public comments and whatnot, as well as the applicant's, uh, submission, so. So did we get everything for now? I mean, you might, you could have fur- further comments before they wrap up permitting for the project, but, um, you know. Sooner they have this for consideration, the better because, uh, one or another, whatever's done or not, you know, they'll have it in mind, so.
That's pretty good.
Yep. All right, um, I just defer to you guys. Do you want to just authorize the chair to, um, sign the letter, you know, it says amend this evening, obviously, but. Sign the letter and get it off to the ZBA?
Is it a motion or do we just?
Yeah, do we want to do a motion related to that?
I'd suggest a motion just because of formality that you are, um, intentionally authorizing the chair to, to, you know, sign that on behalf of the board as a body, that's all. It's a, you know.
We have a quorum?
We're good, you know, one, two, three.
Is Matt, uh, a- able to vote?
Uh, technically, he's here when there's a, he's acting when there's a special permit, so to speak, um.
Let him vote. No, I want him to. Don't get me wrong, I'm just.
I'm not, I'm not sure, Frank, there's some areas that, you know, of minutia, I'm not sure if people are gonna be debating to the end of time, so.
I think in this case, it's not a, an application before us.
Yeah.
It's just general business, so I think you can vote. Okay, um, motion to allow draft letter to be, uh, submitted and signed by the chair. I would like to second that. I, I'd also like to, as part of that, if, if we could, um, allow the. Chair and planning director to do any wordsmithing necessary before.
Sure.
Just have to be exactly.
Great, sure, thank you.
Uh, so we'll do this as a roll call vote, uh, Charlie Palmisano.
Uh, here, yes.
Jamie Pennington.
Yes.
Rick Tainter.
Yes.
Uh, Matt Heffron.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Uh, so the motion passed.
So that's, that's all we had for this evening, um, although I did, it's probably worth mentioning one other thing, if you had a moment, I'll just flag it for. Your consideration for a future meeting really, but just to kind of put it on your radar, um, otherwise I didn't have anything else myself, Bob, um.
No, nothing else for me either.
Um, I just wanted to note, uh, for the members, I'm just gonna show you briefly on where something is on the website, just so you can find it, um, and I, it's. We were gonna have it on a future agenda. Um, I did discuss it with the Conservation Commission last night, actually, um, this is. Um, I don't know if any of you are familiar with or have gone through the application process for a permit in the city, but, um, a lot of the new permits, including obviously our land use permits. Are accessed from the city website. We point to, uh, OpenGov as a platform, um, and there is the, uh, repository for all the types of permits. Obviously, they're, they're coming from the city website, but, um, so if you follow that link, you know, from planning board or some of the other boards or departments to, to, to the permits. Um, in there is the different divisions building, you know, you'll find, of course, the, um, historical commission, planning board, you'll find your permit, you know, applications there. But, um, further down on the page, we have what we refer to as a test portal. Um, and what I discussed with the commission last night, what we thought would make sense to get some feedback from the planning board members on as well. Is, uh, I think Rick knows a little about this, but the res- uh, resiliency checklist, so the idea being, um, folks could, uh, as perhaps as part of an application. To either the Conservation Commission and/or the Planning Board, for instance, um, take into account resiliency and sustainability measures in the review of those projects. Where applicants are asked to clarify, you know, what they've done in certain areas and the board can keep those things in mind. Um, obviously, there's a sort of, you know, related discussion about what regulations are in play and is there something that the board can mandate or, you know. Uh, is used as a guideline versus a standard or whatnot. Um, but the goal here, I think, was to start to educate folks and to start making sure that these things are considered. At least in, you know, in projects. So in essence, the Resiliency Committee had suggested that we, uh, roll out something like this. Uh, I don't want to add it to the timeframe for tonight, obviously, because we didn't, uh, have it in there, but I wanted to mention for future meetings that, um, we, our goal was to just. When we have a little bit of time in the tail of a meeting like this, um, I'll check with Bob on that, uh, for the next upcoming meetings, but. To just run through like we did for the Conservation Commission and just sort of step, you know, through this and just kind of show you just a couple of, you know, it's, it's not lengthy, but a couple of questions in there. And really get your feedback as, in essence, as to whether or not you think this is something that should be rolled out as part of the application to the planning board, if so. For what, you know, any scalability in terms of project size, um, any adjustments, things like that, um, before anything is like this is rolled out. In, in essence, uh, the reason that, you know, I mentioned it here is because the Resiliency Committee members in a sub, subgroup was working on it. But obviously, if the suggestion is that one of the permitting boards or more, more than one of the permitting board. Use that as part of the application process for projects that the boards themselves, those permanent bodies should review, you know, that, that sort of thing. We obviously are familiar with our existing application materials, um, so whether something's written in the ordinance or is in the application form and any debate over what's appropriate there. Um, it made a sense that we sort of review that with you, so I just wanted to note that it's there. If you want to take a peek, uh, if you create an account, you got one already, you can just log in and do it. Um, just kind of experiment with it, you know, essentially, um, we're just trying to see how it looks and, uh, works according to that subcommittee's work. And, um, just kind of get your feedback. Do you think it's helpful? Do you think it's not? Do you think there's something that could be tweaked or adjusted? Um, suggestion was made. Um, suggestion was made by a couple of folks and it'd be sort of like a, a tool or a resource available to people, but not necessarily a mandatory form that folks fill out. Um, don't have, I'll leave it to you guys to give feedback, but I just wanted to note that it's there so you could, you know, come back to a future discussion and perhaps if you've looked at it, you know, see it in advance. Thank you.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right.
You take a look?
All set, Andy?
Yes, thank you.
I'll uh, take a motion to adjourn the meeting then.
Removed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Clearly second. Okay, roll call vote again. Charlie Palmisano.
Yes.
Jamie Pennington.
Yes.
Rick Tinter.
Yes.
Matt Heffron.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. See you.